Back away from COVID. So nothing significant. Part of that is an extra route, part of that is diesel fuel and gasoline costs going higher. Next is maintenance services ratio, and again, this is our transportation except for our staff. We can sure they're taking care of the district. You can see in 22 that our maintenance expense went down somewhat. Part of that is personnel now going without personnel for a while. Greg also continues to look into cost-saving opportunities for us for our regular purchases and labor products and things like that. Administrative services also continue to trend down, but not a significant amount. You could also call it steady. The unspent balance ratio, this is whatever you don't spend from the year before in the general fund that carries over, divided by whatever your maximum authority is for the year. You can see there in at the end of 22, we have a maximum authorized budget of thirteen point eight million. Regular unspent balance was four and a half million, the carryover. So that ratio continues to trend up as we come out of ESER. Pardon, as we come out of ESER, we continue to see it go down. That will, that ratio will continue to start going down. And again, the annual unspent balance ratio. The goal is to spend one hundred percent of the annual authority you get, not the maximum, but that you have, which includes the unspent carryover from last year plus any miscellaneous income. So it's good that that continues to go up again. We will see that starting to trend down in the next couple of years. Careful with things as you move forward. You see a more detailed explanation of the unspent balance component on the next page. But again, you can see that in the regular program, unspent balance is four point one seven million. But our categorical unspent balance went down again from the fifth year ago to two point seven seven percent, which is outstanding. We need to continue to finish that as much as categorical dollars as possible, and we do. We're trying to spend some of the carryovers that we've had, so. That's, that's exactly what you want to say is a very low categorical unspent balance versus. And you can see on the next page that categorical balance history for all of the different projects that we have, from ELL to at-risk, future salary supplement, or a reader, use professional development, they're all listed there. And you can see the progression over time of the categorical fund balance. Five years ago was five percent unspent balance, it's now to two percent, two point seven seven. The next page is the one that really makes the most change, and that's our normal trend, down twenty-one students this year. You can see that, and we're still anticipating that trend will continue. The general fund per pupil cost, that's how much money we are spending on each student out of the general. Take the, take what we're spending divided by the number of students, and that's what we're spending on the general fund. That is not the state allocated number. That is the amount we are spending on each student. On the back page is the tax rate history. And again, it's come down for the last four years, and this past year was stable. Kendra, did you have that state average number? So on the, on that page, in the bottom right-hand corner of the numbers chart, there's a blank. And Kendra has that number forty right there.
Thirteen point nine three nine two four.
Thirteen point nine three.
Nine two four.
Nine two four. So that's a, that's an increase of almost fifty-one cents. For the state average for already this step. Any questions? I guess two things stood out to me, the lowering of the categorical fund percentage. It's a goal that we had set for quite a while, seeing that it falls to zero is a very positive thing. And then the unspent balance, we discussed that over the last two years, but that percentage probably needs to come down a little bit. But with the, as Mr. Craig said, with declining enrollment, we have to watch that because that disappears in a hurry if you did not watch it. And we've been on the other side of that scenario. Overall, very positive again, important. Any other comments, questions? All right, we have now to the conclusion of our annual meeting. Would entertain a motion to adjourn? Okay, it's been moved and seconded to adjourn our annual meeting. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same. Motion carried. Next page. All right, I want to call to order our regular business meeting. First item on the agenda is to approve the agenda, whether the motion do so. It's been moved and seconded to approve the agenda as presented. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same. Motion carried. I'll now read the five school board basics. Put students first, follow the law in your own policy, respect the chain of command, base decisions on shared objective information, and operate in the public eye. Item three are the consent agenda items, and I do believe there's an extra sheet that Kendra handed out, handed out.
Yeah, there was just a few more bills that. Most of them were pretty straightforward. The larger one for six thousand dollars was To Imagine Learning. We started doing our own credit recovery through here, so that was for, that bill was for first semester. Do you have any questions? Any of the other reports are anything?
There are no questions. I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda items.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent items.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda items as presented. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same. Motion carried. Moving on to item four, visitors, public forum. I have three sheets here. Anybody else have one to turn in? All right, we'll take them in the order that we received them. First off, Mike Wedge, talking about high standards. Mr. Wedge, it's yours.
Recently, the Iowa Department of Education released proficiency scores for schools. Sibley-Chin, which is a service of steady decline, has a dubious distinction between rated needs improvement. Only one SULAN with an overall proficiency score of forty percent, close to the conference. Although our science scores are ten points ahead of the state, and on five SULAN schools higher than the science. Several parents have reached out to me to relay their concerns and have asked for cause of the most important solutions. First, Sibley-Chin is certainly not the only school facing difficult challenges. Across the state and the country, schools and communities are struggling to deliver a high-level education while at the same time providing a supportive, safe environment for students. Despite the highly dysfunctional home apartments many children live in, I credit the current SO girls basketball and cross-country teams. Something to change the conversation at SO, from it can't be done, to look what we can accomplish if we ban Gary Walker Hudson. I believe what these ladies have done can serve as a template for adults in this community. It's easy to have meetings where we complain, point fingers, and bemoan our woes. But it's another to participate in meaningful, constructive, and honest conversations that lead to change. We need adults to step up, tell, nurture the school, better support teachers and kids, and start honestly reflecting at what we've done, what we have been doing, and what needs to change. Do other SULAN schools have challenges? I'm talking to teachers and parents in other neighboring schools. They certainly do. But one thing West Lyon and the Rock Valley does not help is parents who come to school board meetings to demand that their curriculum is made easier or that schools provide alternative, easy classes for students. Two weeks ago, I asked a teacher who has been in the district for over twenty-five years, and in my estimation is one of our best teachers, our conference squad. She replied, the worst of my career. Parents were upset at her how difficult the curriculum is. As one district teacher told me last year, if you just make sure everyone has A's and B's, then the parents won't come after you. Four or three years ago, that teacher told me, a lot of us used to be like you, and other teachers face significant backlash. But it was not worth all the parent attacks. It's not surprising that teachers are more and more reluctant to challenge students if they're going to get such a negative response. As I told one concerning parent at conferences, every one parent who wants their child pushed to achieve more of their potential. Three are upset, and offered to Facebook to lampass the school or the teacher. Another teacher told me, it seems like parents are willing to ambush me. I am nervous and anxious almost every day I'm at school. Indeed, without the strong support of Mr. Craig, Mr. DeZao, and the school board, I'm sure many of us teachers would not have continued to push our students. We adults seem to have forgotten that learning requires struggle, patience, and support. We have begun to see productive struggle as a threat, when in fact, all learning occurs only while students productively struggling. If something's easy, you're not learning. In conclusion, if you want Sibley-Chin to produce high achievers and become a high-performing school once again, as many of our students neighboring schools are, then we need parents to step forward and support teachers who are challenging their children.
Thank you, Mr. Wedge. Next up, Tom Taylor, talking about district concerns.
Sure, most severe, tired of hearing it from me, but here I go. Our superintendent has bullied the staff and the public. Every day we get more reports of this. I have and will continue to fill out epic complaints on behalf of the current FAS teachers, along with anyone else from the public. Our superintendent handled the Mrs. Broxma, Teresa Stoffer, and other teachers wrong. We've had more staffing, student enrollment issues, and our statewide testing scored our lower since he has been here. Besides the financial issues, how much more is this going to cost our district? He provided our school board last month with a twenty-page survey to the board members, leaving out pertinent information to purposely mislead the board. He either lied to Cal Grimes or the IPIB when it came to the state that he contacted each of these board members prior to his contract discussion being put on the agenda. I gave him an option to settle this informal agreement with the IPIB, and he never took that to the school board as an option. If he will lie and misrepresent to our board on this topic so easily, what else has he misled them on in the past? I know he's resigned, but as I get more reports of him doing his job even less now, he's canceled his department head meetings. He's not going to finish his one-on-ones with the staff. We still have a district to run, and it seems like he's trying to let go, be let go so he can get paid instead of leaving. I'm going to quote our superintendent as he said to many people, we don't like the way you're running this school, so you could just leave. Mr. Grimes, you've been on this board a long amount of time, and as a school board member, you take an oath, and you just did it tonight, to be impartial. You have failed to do this a lot of the times in this past year. To get things passed, you've stepped down, recused yourself to get things motioned. The superintendent's contract, you stated that you've been working with the superintendent since the vote in June to get the discussion back on the agenda. Since June, you, you did not bring any other solutions to the board. You said you didn't want to be behind like last time. If you are that concerned, why would you not have any other discussions on this topic since June? You have been the head of the board member, you had other board members hesitant, and you did not step down to motion to table, but threatened to step down and motion, to get the motion to vote. This is not being unbiased or impartial. You have been part of the board through all these bad choices. You have been the head of this and are leading this group with bad intentions and not teaching them. I do believe it's time for you to step down and relieve yourself from the board. I would also like the board to consider looking at a different legal counsel, as it has not been very good for us the last four years.
All right, next up, George Broxma, and concerns.
Yeah, a lot of your concerns.
Okay.
Then I have some questions. Nineteen sixty, I was the youngest one to go to country school in the county. Alhamburg Country School, I went one year. And the constitution was taught. And the older kids taught the younger kids, and we didn't get slapped. I come to Sibley School the next year, and that was cheating. At the time, us farmers had country schools, was trying to save money. The older kids, the teacher would see, kids would listen to kids. It was a really good thing in my life. It's what made my life what it is today, because of so much good common sense. What I'd like to say, I don't have any paper in front of me. I do not hate anyone. I'm just disappointed in people that don't get it. And that is of the most biggest thing that we have for our foundation of this community, for this town, for this jurisdiction, of this county, of townships. It was all put in place by people that knew to protect the constitution. And because of that, today, we have run away from it. We have been thinking only of other things besides our constitution. So I'd like to ask you, you took the oath. Tell me what you know about constitutional law, the two that did. If you can, I'm not degrudging you. Tell me the truth, tell the crowd, crowd the truth. What you know about constitutional law. Can you answer that for us?
George, we're not required to answer questions. I realize that.
Okay, so what is the penalty for violating it to all of us? Do we have one? Is there a violation of something like that? Back in the beginning of our country with George Washington, it was treason. Do you know there was nineteen people? The first day when they decided to sign it, went and told the Queen England. So under the jurisdiction of the American Bar Association, that's what we're at today. We've been listening to the American Bar Association. Do you know when that started? Have you any idea when that started? That we had to have a license to practice law? When did that start? We're the school. This is education. So why isn't it? Kidergartners have something to do with the constitution for fun, a game.
That's three minutes, if you want to.
Three minutes, see?
If you want to wrap it up.
No notes. I don't know what they had, but anyhow. What it is, we should have education of middle school, grade school, nine weeks, every class, high school, constitutional law. And we should study it, because if the constitution is we, the people, we, the people. I'm a people, I'm a people, not person. These are all people, I hope. But do they understand the constitution? We've had a lot of years, all of us have not learned the constitution. And the school is the foundation to our education of this jurisdiction. So we're under the jurisdiction of the constitution of God. What is the American Bar Association?
I've got to stop you.
You do. See, I knew that would happen.
I'm sorry, but.
Because you're not constitutional. You took an oath, I'm telling you. I ran for school board probably about when you did. And the guy in the newspaper got fired. He came to my house afterward because they reported what I wanted in the paper. That's been about fifteen years ago, in the nineties. So people, we have to stand up for this country. It's what your future is, the children of you all. If we don't, the people are in charge of this, not the American Bar Association.
George, I've got to have you stop. It's already over four minutes. I'm sorry, but thank you for speaking. All right, moving on to administrative reports. We'll start out with Mr. DeZao.
Yeah, so our general school information there is listed. We are working through our multi-tier system of supports to try and better identify and help support our kids who are struggling in school and to give them what they need to be successful and how we can work through that process. So that's been a very good thing. I'd like to commend our, kind of my impromptu MTSS team as they work through it with me, thanks to the AEA for kind of working through that with us as well. It's been a very good process to this point, so we're going to continue to work to provide the best that we can for our kids. Our last month, PD has included our in-house mentoring, has included discussions to individualize instruction, and has included curriculum work. And I cannot be more proud of the work that the staff continues to do during our PD times. I did not put this in my report, but I also would like to make note of it, how successful our parent-teacher conferences were last month at the elementary school, the pre-K through four, our average attendance was ninety-two percent attended the conference of each classroom teacher, so a very good number. And then for the middle school and some of our other support staff, not support staff, that's the wrong way to put it, special ed, ELL, some of those teachers who do not have a specialized classroom like our classroom teachers do, the average number of students and parents that they conferenced with was about twenty-four. So very good nights, working to provide supports and provide students what they need to be successful here at SO. So just very proud of those things that, like I said, that our teachers continue to do though, so.
All right, any comments or questions for Mr. DeZao? All right, moving on to Mr. DeZao.
Since the last meeting, our winter sports seasons have started for, at the middle school and high school, obviously. So for girls, basketball, boys, basketball, wrestling, and then we're going to get going shortly here again with speech season starting up and some of the other ag events that they'll start practicing for in a variety of ways. It's kind of a transition and things are getting really busy again for high school kids. The musical happened, Annie, and if you didn't get a chance, it was really good. It was a fun display for student talents. I enjoy watching that, and we've had conferences, as Kent said. PD has focused since our last meeting, I just put what we focused on since the October meeting. And parent-teacher conference prep is what we focused on, the mentoring and the mentee. I think Lindsay ran that one that week while they did curriculum work and things like that. Interventionist, I'm going to click on that. I think they'll talk about that in the December meeting, but I'm going to come back to that in a second. One of the bills that Kendra talked about paying was for our parent recovery. And if you remember, last spring, we went back and we talked about how we're going to do that in-house versus go through NCC. And so the cost was a little higher, but we could have a lot more control, and I think they'd get a better product with that. And just talking about those that have worked in that this year and running that program, that has gone so much smoother, so. I just want to thank you guys for doing that. We just have a lot more interaction, we have more control, we can see what they're doing when they're in here and make some better choices for kids, so I appreciate you guys doing that. If you can, if you see the intervention updates on the bottom, there's an attachment. But basically, if you're looking at that all, what Emma Asl is the one that runs this in the middle school. And she kind of broke it down to explain similar last month, but this is showing just for the month of October. November's not done yet, so that dad's not on here. But what percentage of the kids in that grade are getting pulled out? So these are kids that aren't in special ed or any other services, but through our screen or the FAST, they were maybe below grade level. And so what percentage of the kids in each grade roughly rounded to the nearest percent there are getting some services? And if they're making adequate progress to get back on track or not? And you can see by grade there, a lot of them, more than half of them or higher, are making great progress with her. The intervention is those that maybe identified that they need some additional assistance, but they're not getting one-on-one time with her. And trying to schedule them during fourth or eighth with some other staff members. You can see right there, the percentage of kids are getting that service and those that are making progress. If you look at the eighth grade, why it says six percent and zero making progress, it's because it's too many kids. So when you only have that few kids, it kind of skews your data a little bit here. Then on the bottom is, there's a few kids that are getting services in both, because maybe they had a bigger gap to start with, so they're getting that intervention more often. Overall, for the month, ten percent of kids that were in the program exited because they exceeded their goal and were back up to grade level with the progress, and so I don't know overall what that number would be on the year, but that was just for that month. So I just think that speaks to the work, and thank you guys once again for allowing that position to happen.
Okay, any comments or questions for Mr. DeZao? All right, thanks, guys. Superintendent, in addition to the reports submitted, I have an overview of our school performance profile, so I'm going to do that now quickly. So the school performance profile is broken down into.
Can we ask you to speak up with the door open? We can't hear anything back here, and we're here to listen, so can you speak up, please?
You can't shut the door, it's an open meeting. So the performance profile covers several different areas of not only academic achievement, but academic participation. And we'll get, and we'll get into it here as we go along. So first is just straight-out participation in the assessments. That's part of the score. If we have one person that doesn't participate because they're either not here, or they don't take the assessment, that factors into the results, so that you can, you can see that it's just under one hundred percent every year, and more than likely that is due to one person being not in the, not in the district to take the test. Average school achievement was a new marker that was added two years ago. That is an average scale score for the students out of one hundred. So you can see in English, we write it fifty for both years, and in math, just over fifty-one. Both of these scores are near the state average. The conditions for learning composite, the conditions of learning survey is a survey that you all are offered as parents. The students are offered it, and teachers are offered that survey, I believe, so that they can take and provide results. Those different, those results are then turned into numbers. And you can see that our composite has gone up and down significantly from two thousand eighteen to two thousand twenty-two. In two thousand twenty-two, the elementary survey results were included in the, in the overall district results where they had not been included in previous years. I'm sorry, those numbers are little, but graduation rate over four and five years. So when the state calculates graduation rate for, for the school performance profile, they include all students over time who could have graduated in a cohort at Sibley-Chin. And so any of those students that moved to another district and then either didn't show up in the other district or dropped out before, instead of enrolling in the other district, we still have to count them. So if you take a look at the numbers from two thousand eighteen to two thousand twenty-two, we hover around between eighty-seven and ninety percent graduation rate. If you actually take the graduation rate. If you actually take the graduation rate by year of who finishes during that year, our graduation rates have gone up from ninety-one percent in two thousand twenty to ninety-seven percent in two thousand twenty-two, and that's one student out of the class not graduating. So the graduation rate, as the state figures it for this, the school performance profile, uh, is different than what we do. Growth is, uh, the average student growth percentile, so when they take the test, if they did better than they did last year, that's growth, and, and they measure that. So you can see that, um, in English Language Arts, the last three years have been, um, in the same area, math went up to sixty-two last year, down to forty-six this year, um, and so that is, again, that's a measure of who did better on the test last year than they did, um, the year before. Percent proficient is the number that we hear most often about, it's, it's whether the students are proficient on the test or not when they take it. This does not figure in advanced, um, which advanced is one of the areas that we give reports on students, if they do so well on the test, they're not only considered proficient, they're considered advanced. For the purpose of this report, anybody that's proficient, that's all combined together. So you can see that in two thousand eighteen, seventy-eight point four percent of students were proficient, uh, that was the last year that we took Iowa assessments, so we were not taking the ISAS at that time. Two thousand nineteen, you see the score goes down to seventy-two point two seven percent. That trend would be similar if you look back at when Iowa assessments took over for Iowa tests of basic skills. That's the, as we got a new test, we had to figure out how to adjust to the new test and adjust our curriculum and, and things appropriately. And you can see that we've come back up since two thousand nineteen in ELA, and this is district-wide. In math, again, you can see the dip from eighty-eight percent down to sixty-eight percent, and then we've come back up over the past two years outside of COVID. Post-secondary college level define, it, uh, is a measure of how many kids take college classes in high school, whether that's live with our teachers that have their masters and teach through NCC, or whether those are online courses. Uh, again, that's not a proficient or a passing thing, that's just how many of the kids eligible to take the courses are taking the courses. And you can see since two thousand nineteen, that's gone up significantly. Post-secondary career technical education, uh, these are a percentage of CTE concentrators. Uh, so those are kids that take, uh, CTE classes, um, in our, in our high school. And we have a very strong rate of, of participation in our CTE courses. Post-secondary readiness, so just participating in the SAT, or excuse me, the ACT or the SAT, you can see that in two thousand nineteen, we had a much higher level at sixty-eight percent of our high school students participated in the ACT or the SAT, that has gone down since we've come back from COVID. The success rate on ACT SAT is measured by students that have a score of twenty-two or above as a composite, or eleven-ten or higher on the ace, on the SAT. And you can see that when we had more students taking the test in two thousand nineteen, or two thousand eighteen, we only had thirty-nine point four seven percent of students that were meeting the success marker. Now we are at forty-five percent on both, but you can see that we have fewer students taking the test than we did before. The final marker is the district's progress toward an ELP composite, and this is for English learning students, so English as a second language students. Uh, and that varies from year to year, um, it was under forty percent in two thousand eighteen, we're sitting at forty-five percent now. So all of these markers have things that we, that we need to take a look at and work on. Um, not included in the scores are the science Mr. Wedge brought up earlier, um, and you can see that their, um, proficiency across the district, um, has been between sixty-five and seventy percent. And in two thousand eighteen, it wasn't calculated because it wasn't included in the, um, Iowa assessments. So what do we need to do? We, we obviously have concerns and each, each of the areas that are, that are identified factor into the score that you see on the front pages of the performance profile. So you really have to dig in to see what it is that we actually need to work on, and from year to year, it changes. So the things that went down this year that are significant, let's see if I can, I can't load up, I apologize. The first one here is the conditions for learning composite. In twenty-one, we received a score of fifty-three. In two thousand twenty-two, with the elementary added, we received a score of forty-one. So we need to take a look at the survey and, and see what things are on there that we can have conversations about to improve learning conditions, uh, in the classroom for students. Growth in math, again, growth is how many people actually did better on the test than they did the year before. Um, in two thousand twenty-one, that was a sixty-two, a mark of sixty-two, that's not the number of students, that's, that's an average score out of a hundred, and it's forty-six in two thousand twenty-two. And that can be directly correlated to math scores, particularly in the upper middle school level, uh, that we are addressing with, uh, the new teacher coming in, um, in January. We also have adjusted the curriculum for seventh grade students, uh, so we have been taking steps to address, uh, gaps in those, in those areas. Percent proficient in math is directly correlated to growth, seventy-six down to seventy. The post-secondary readiness, ACT SAT participation, that's simply more students taking the test. That's all that score means. So if we have more students taking the test than we did this year, then we'll have a higher score. The progress toward the ELP composite really depends on the, uh, program, the students that are in the program, where they're at in the program, um, we, we have added, um, an English as a second language teacher, uh, so that we have two full-time teachers. We are advertising for pairs, we would like to put two of those pairs in the English as a second language department to provide even more support, and we have money in the categorical to do that with. So those are the five areas that have the biggest gap in scores, um, that we are trying to take a look at and address. So from year to year, we take a look at that school performance profile, and we, we try to find ways that we can allocate resources to help close those gaps.
Questions?
When you look at the, um, ELA numbers, how much of an increase in numbers of students do we have in that population?
EL, ELA or ELL?
No, ELL. So...
The que, the question, the question is how many students are participating from year to year, being assigned in ESL, and it has gone up?
It's gone up.
Any other questions, comments for Mr. Superintendent? All right, if you think of others, don't hesitate to, to call, drop an email. All right, moving on to board committees.
Uh, the policy committee, we've reviewed policies on the meeting, they're on the meeting agenda tonight, um, and they also saw the new assembly policy module up for consideration, so, um, the other two committees did not get this one.
Okay. Recognition of excellence.
Uh, Ava's not gonna be with us the next couple of months, so we'll go ahead and take care of that. And state cross-country, um, seems like that's been a long time ago, but we didn't have a meeting, uh, our last meeting was right, right after the state meets, or before the state meet, so, uh, we congratulate Madison Brower and Madison Marco on their top ten finishes at the state cross-country meet. We congratulate Garrett Atherton, selected to the All-State Orchestra on bass trombone. Ten high school band members were selected for the Northwest Iowa Band Messengers Association High School Honor Band, Morgan Holes, Claire Bremen, Hannah Prins, Gabe Van Uff, Mark Jensen, Carissa Holstein, Aiden Dazeo, Keaton Crowett, David Poppin, and Garrett Atherton. Two seventh and eighth grade band members were selected for, uh, the Northwest Iowa Band Messengers Association Junior High School Honor Band, Lou Kileman and Lindy Tracy. And ten sixth grade band members were selected for their honor band, Jacy Julius, Emily Lopez Loraggy, Aiden Versteg, Ava Hench, Kyler Maxwell, Weston Boss, Julia Wolfswinkle, Harry Sanger, Emma Bokey, and William Freeman. The, uh, Northwest Iowa Choral Directors Association Middle School Honor Choir, sixteen seventh and eighth grade choir members were selected, Mason Craig, Alex, Alexis Gallswich, Presley Henning, Ella Howard, Taylor Lang, Maria Martinez, Alexis Salcido, Amanalai Vinitas, Kendra Chamber, Chambers, Jocelyn Dazeo, Jay Munoz, Salome Ruano, Shyla Stafford Schulte, Jordi Acevedo, Dominic Blanco, and Carver Rude. National Honor Society two thousand twenty-two inductees, there's Zoe Ackerman, Grace Beavers, Taylor Gremer, Sam Chambers, Keaton Crowett, Ava Dagel, Aiden Dazeo, Jan Adresen, Christina Haven, Macy Huckstra, Carissa Holstein, Jared Kruger, Brooke Platt, Ella Ryder, Cora Reader, and Sam Schnuff. So congratulations to all of our students that were, um, that received recognitions this past month.
All right, thank you. Let me get that to next by my... Oh. Uh, IASB update, um, just finished with a great convention, I thought. Each of you can report on highlights. I finished my second term, um, six plus years on the board and decided not to run again, I would have qualified for another three years if I would have so chose. Um, we will be receiving, um, applicants for the next District One representative. Um, I have met both of them, they are both fantastic. One is from Sioux Center, one is from Storm Lake. Um, I believe you should have gotten an email today from IASB that you can click on each one of their names and get their background and why they're gonna run for board at our next meeting, um, I think we have to have it done by the twenty-first of December. Each district in District One will vote to, for a person, one person to pick that board seat. So be looking for that, or check that out on your email that I think you received today, I think the school may have received it also. Any other com-
So we each have a voter at our school, aren't we?
One, uh, both three at school. So we will vote for one person. I think there's a spot on the IASB website to download that, what our vote as a district is. Any other comments? Is this the time that we're going to have each person talk about the convention?
Yeah.
I thought they had really good speakers, as, as always, I think, uh, you know, Dr. Brown, I think, was the first one in the morning that kicked off, and his dissertation on empathy, I've never heard of, uh, from back, was he did that ten years ago probably, or some of that, you know, so it's, it was a problem back then too, right? His message about taking care of people and humanity and stuff like that, so...
I'd say he was probably one of my favorites, although all of them were really good. Um, I just kept jotting down so many of the things that he said. Probably the one thing that stuck out the most to me is, at times, we look at people, but we don't see them, and, um... I thought of that the last couple of weeks as I've been filling in for Joey Pinkford in the guidance office, is just as we see students, but not only students, but just people in general, everybody's carrying that invisible backpack that he talked about, everybody has something, and are we looking past what we see on the outside? And, um, I think it's important that we, that we do that. I just, uh, he just had a lot, a lot of really good things to say. Human and ki, humankind, if you take it and separate it, humankind, be both. He does have a show that is going to be on, I didn't catch the station, called the Parent, ABC, December fifteenth, the parent test, I would really encourage people to check that out. And, um, he also has a podcast, so I would encourage you to check that out, Dr. Adolf Brown.
I would echo the same thing on Brown, he was a very good speaker, had some good ideas, had a sense and a sense of humor. I also went to some breakouts on, uh, superintendent search process. Um, and I gave some ideas on different things to look at for whether you do it yourself or hire firm. Going through the inter, interviewing process and identifying candidates. And I also did the superintendent review process, which is somewhat what we're doing now, but they gave a couple different ideas on how to do so.
You missed it. Davey, um, I guess you got anything?
Well, the thing about that, with the superintendent evaluation, you know, it's funny how some of the school districts were actually evaluating the superintendent on all ten of those criteria. Um, I kinda thought that was kinda unique after, you know, we were supposed to pick three, and I thought that was pretty well spelt out, but I guess not for everybody, so...
Okay. Um, for me, it was just a reviving three days to get excited about being on the school board. You can get bogged down...